All right, 7:01, meeting is open. Minutes from our last meeting. I think everybody had a chance to review them. I have two comments on the minutes regarding item six. Being Verizon's minor site plan approval.
Yep.
I'd like for it to, even though it common sense should prevail, the minutes read that we stipulated between the hours of 1:00 and 3:00 p.m. The inclusion here, we had questioned their submission of an eight-foot fence. And by the way, this, these minutes read it's that we are requiring or requesting that they put in an eight-foot fence.
Go back to your one to three. What was that?
They voted to approve the minor site plan with the conditions that the testing take place once during the work week, Monday through Friday, between the hours of 1:00 and 3:00.
Yeah.
And I think it should read...
Clarify, PM.
PM.
Oh, well, yeah. I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. Yeah, good idea.
And then further down, when the Verizon folks were presenting an eight-foot fence, even though I'm not necessarily opposed to it, I don't think we can require it only because I don't believe that...
We were leaving, I saw that too, that we were more or less leaving that up to...
Harry. The building inspector.
Correct, the zoning official.
Right, so it's not a stipulation that...
Yeah.
My expectation was that we were requiring of them, even though I'm not opposed to an eight-foot fence in that position.
They had, I think they, their plan, they had, was going to do that.
They showed an eight-foot fence.
And we were at, geez, can you go? I thought we had, we had discussed whether there was a limit of six feet.
So, I don't want the board to be in a position that we're requiring people to do something that is outside of the construct of our bylaws.
Could say recommend as shown on their plans. Recommend as shown on their plans an eight-foot fence?
Or...
Or strike it.
Recommend that they install a fence as...
That needs the approval of the zoning official.
I mean, if Harry wants to allow them, or if he has the power to do that, let him do it, you know? I just, I don't want as a board for us to be providing a directive that we aren't allowed to do. So I think that needs to be amended before we can approve it.
Do you want to accept the meetings with the amendment changes, the minutes?
Sure.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes from May 22nd, as proposed to be amended.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
No vouchers. Next item, number four, we have, and for those that don't know, our planner, Steve Parker, won't be with us tonight. He had an emergency this afternoon. So, I'll, we'll be working without him. Okay, so, plan endorsement, proven not required. David Stone, 72 Mount Lebanon Street. Conveyance of parcels to abutters. Who is here representing that? And you are?
I answer. My name's Keith Murray, full record, I'm cornerstone engineer.
Yep.
And I'm here representing the applicant and the owner. David Stone, he's the applicant and the owner, and also a client.
Yep.
John Monroe, sorry.
One of the abutters.
They are one of the abutters.
Yep.
I'll put up the easel if you want, but it's a pretty basic plan. It is, but you do...
We don't have, can you show us here?
Yeah, sure.
All right. Or if you want to put it up and so the guys can see it.
Essentially, I'm sorry about that. This is Mount Lebanon, and Shirley Street is here. These are the abutters to the property. This is the subject property. This parcel, the property is going to be subdivided, not subdivided, wrong word, just going to be divided into parcels. That's it. These parcels will go to each one of the abutters in accordance with this table. We're just creating parcels. It's that simple. There's no subdivision, there's no room in the plan. These parcels shall not be subdivided. If they were to be subdivided, they'd have to come before the planning board, they'd have to go through a regular process. They are going to be, this parcel will go along with this abutter here, that parcel will go here, and I'm not going to go through all the names, but that parcel will go here, and this parcel will go here. So, it's just creating parcels. That's all it is.
Okay, so that, this here is just the way it is now?
Yes.
The plan that you're showing us right there?
That's, this plan, yes, is the plan we're asking to be endorsed, to have these parcels taken out of the original piece of land.
Okay, so what did it look like before?
It's essentially...
Was it all one big piece?
Yes. It was one large piece, and I could highlight it for you if you want.
I can draw it. I can draw it. Do you have like the, anything guys can see?
Yeah, if you've got the original, then that's fine.
These are three, this is the original, no, no, am I getting it right? Yes. This is the original. This plan, this is 81, this plan is 88. Where is, oh, no, wrong one, sorry. Forget this one.
This is the parcel that you're breaking up, number one here?
Yeah, and 88, it added a small jut up here because they were going to look at building a house, and they were going to add 8100 square feet here. So there's an 88 plan that adds, so this lot goes from 2.67 to 2.85. The current owner, Mr. Stone, owns the whole thing, you know, and he's selling it to each of us in chunks, is the idea. And that's this plan there.
That is correct. This would describe the new proposed transaction, or what was the result of the plan there?
This is a piece that he's talking about, that fits here. That little piece right there. It's 8100 square feet.
Yeah.
It's shown on this plan, and it's included in all of the calculations, lot area, everything. That's this piece right here.
Okay, yeah.
So, they're all combined, and they're just separating into each individual parcel.
Steve had told me about this briefly this afternoon, trying to convey, that he had looked it over, law looked, meeting, our requirements. I do have the checklist if we want to go through that. This is yours, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Does anybody need to see any more of this?
No, we would just need to have the plan to go through it, so.
What's that?
We would just need to have the plan up so we could go through the checklist right now.
Okay, do you want to take that plan there?
Yep.
And do, and I'll read the checklist. Rick?
Sure.
Would you review it?
I have it, yeah. Usually, typically, we have a plan in front of us so we can take a look at it and go over it, and, not that we don't trust you, but it is our signature on it.
Yes, I understand, sir.
Just one of your paper copies for us, maybe one for Dave, or Mike.
Go over there, let, no, we're, they're, when I go through it.
I'll let you handle it. Joe, see what you're looking for.
You want me to go through it?
Sure.
Title, North Point, date and scale.
Title, North Point, date, date on there somewhere.
Yeah, it's on title block.
Yep, date and scale, it's there.
Name and address of record owner and servicer.
In the notes.
Owner, David Stone, Farmers Row, Brighton, yep. Surveyor is there as well, cornerstone.
Name of all abutters?
Monroe, Lee's, yep. Samargian Hall, and Hollywood.
Okay.
Yep.
Existing streets, ways, lots, easements, public or common areas?
If easements are on, they're on here, the streets are here.
Streets are here.
Third area in which division takes place, including all parcels affected by an increase or decrease.
Yep.
Frontage in lieu of any remaining adjoining land owned by the applicant. There's no remaining. Space to record the board action and signature.
Yep.
Notice of any special permits or nor variances issued to the land or buildings thereon.
There are none.
Yeah, there are none, it's on there.
Statement that the plan meets one or more of the following criteria. All lots meet Pepperell zoning frontage requirements. Lots are, lots are being drawn and made part of the adjoining land to meet Pepperell zoning frontage requirements, where lots are pre-existing Pepperell zoning requirements, but each has at least 20 feet of frontage.
It's not applicable because they're not lots, they're parcels.
They're parcels, so, yeah.
Look, it's plan showing the area described.
Yes.
And clarification, the plan is drawn by a land surveyor.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. I'll make a motion that we accept plan of land for 72 Mount Lebanon Street as drawn, Pepperell, Massachusetts.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
In hand, yes. Okay.
For the miles, sir. I think you needed four copies, so you got one, two, three, right there, you want another one?
We don't have the marker. A man didn't, Steve, oh, okay. Sign on the model. You're welcome.
Enjoy the sun.
Thank you.
Thanks, too.
Anytime, yeah.
Thanks for coming in.
Whatever arrives.
George, do we keep the mile copy?
Yeah, I guess.
Well, he's going to have to record it.
Right.
So, we take it.
Okay.
We get, what, we need one copy here or something, right?
Of course, sure.
Okay, I have a copy. All right. And, yeah, you've got, that's right, too, you've got to have that.
Yeah, it has to be recorded.
I think we want one. If there's anything else, Steve would call you.
We can always make more.
If he's missing something, all right?
That sounds fine.
He knows how to get hold of you, right?
Yes, of course.
Oh, yeah. You know where you are.
Hopefully things go well from there.
All right.
If they need, if he needs anything else, we'll get it to him.
Yep.
So, you speak. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. We have a, before us, a, just looking for, oh, recommendations. The selectmen have a special permit application for a commercial kennel from Lisa and Peter Forbes, three dog training, four Hotel Place. Applicant will not do any boarding or daycare on-site. Applicant will provide one-hour training classes for up to seven dogs. Planning board recommendation. It's been filed, and the only thing that I saw of interest here was from our zoning official, Harry, and I'll read his comments, okay? Dear Mr. and Mrs. Forbes, you submitted a notice of intent to provide dog training services at Number Four Hotel Place. The property is located in a commercial district. And, do I have to go up there? An accessory pet daycare facility which allows pet training services is permitted as a matter of right in the commercial district on a property consisting of more than two acres. The property at Four Hotel Place is, has .287 acres. A commercial kennel for four dogs or more allows overnight stays in training with a special permit from the Board of Selectmen. While I understand you will not be keeping dogs overnight, the Board of Selectmen may be able to issue a special permit for a commercial kennel to provide the training. If you need any more information, please call Harry Cullen. And there's a whole bunch of other... Do you people want me to read all the letters of support, or do you want me to pass this around, or?
I haven't received any of those. Be helpful to understand a little bit more about what's going on here, because if we're talking about a commercial kennel, this is not a commercial kennel, so...
No, they're not asking, they're asking just to be doing dog training.
Right, and we're being asked for a recommendation based on our definition of a kennel, comma, commercial, where it falls in the table of uses as the Board of Selectmen, if it's in the, not allowed anywhere but commercial industrial district, and it's under the purview of the Board of Selectmen in both of those districts to make this decision.
Yeah.
But we're not making a recommendation based on a pet care facility. We're being asked to make a recommendation based on a commercial kennel. I'm confused as to why it's before us.
Well, you know that a lot of these circulate throughout the boards for comments, and recommendation, that's basically what this is here that we received.
I understand that, but according to our meeting agenda, they're putting in an application for a commercial kennel, which...
Yeah.
That's not what they intend to do.
No.
So, is there anyone here representing the Forbeses?
No, I guess not.
Is it for recommendation, or just for general comment?
Comment?
Comment and review if applicable.
Okay.
Is it for recommendation, or just for general comment?
Recommendation or any comments? Basically, if we have comments, you know, we see a problem, or say...
Well, I, if that's, if we're just making comments, then I would make a comment to the Board of Selectmen, that you should be very careful on issuing this permit, because Hotel Place is a pretty small area.
The other thing, too, is I thought that that building, I think, is a little bit of commercial, and I always thought this residential.
That's, that area is zoned, I checked the zoning map this afternoon, that is zoned commercial.
Right, but in the building itself.
Is zoned commercial.
There, he rents out to residents. I mean, the landlord, I guess, doesn't have a problem, he's, wants him to go in, and it's a commercial area. The acreage thing, so they need to get a special, really, it's in the selectmen's lap under these type of applications.
If they're awarded a permission to have a commercial kennel in Hotel Place, they could hold that up and say, we can have four or more dogs for more than 12 hours boarding here, the town gave us permission to do it. I would just caution the selectmen on issuing that.
Yep. I mean, maybe the application should be changed, that they're asking to run a dog training facility and not a kennel, if there's such a thing, and how that, how the selectmen want to write up their special permit.
We do have a bylaw that provides for accessory pet care that was passed a town meeting a few years ago.
Okay, yep.
But that requires them to have two acres of land. I don't want to see this business not occur if what they're going to do is their intended purpose, but I'd be very careful as a town.
Training dogs at .287 acres, isn't that kind of, I think it's kind of grand, don't you think?
Yeah.
I mean, have seven potentially barking dogs, I mean, they're there to be trained, so obviously they're, they're probably not too well behaved to start with. I don't know, I don't know what the neighbors would say.
What were some of the other comments, George?
Potential noise issue.
Basically, the only department I have here is the building inspector, zoning officer, comment. Next letter seems to be in support of this individual, the applicant. This next letter is like in support for the applicant. Another one in support. Another one in support. Another one in support. That's about all I have.
And the people who have written letters of support, are they abutters, are they residents?
No, one person is from Chemsford, other are Pepperell residents.
Yeah, I'd like to see.
Pass it down. I don't know if I can change my comment.
So they're not asking for a special permit?
From us?
From, from the Board of Selectmen. It sounds like this is just notice that says if...
They'd have to get a permit from the selectmen, I guess, to do this business.
Right, but an accessory pet daycare facility is permitted as a matter of right. Does that allow them to do...
If they have two acres.
Right.
Right. The way the bylaw is written, so, which Harry sort of quoted in his letter, that kennel, because I guess the way it was given to him, that there is a kennel license, but they say they're not going to board animals.
Mm-hmm.
It's only on two acres.
Could they issue a special permit to allow it on less than two acres and not, or not issue it as a...
I guess they would say, you're not going to be a kennel, you're going to be a, I would think, make a...
Training facility.
Right, you're going to be a dog trainer.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I would do, I would caution the selectmen to be very specific about the special permit, so that they understand this is not a commercial, we're not giving you the right to open a commercial kennel.
Well, I think like Rick says, that we caution the selectmen in regards to that under zoning, as stated in the zoning officer's letter, that those by rights are allowed on a two-acre parcel, but they said they're not a commercial, maybe you need to amend their application.
Because that also, the accessory pet daycare facility is also up to the decision of the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
So...
So they're applying to the selectmen, and this, we're just, they're just soliciting recommendations and comments. That's why we get it, so, I think in regards to, we could answer them, well, yeah. answer them, oh, yeah. Only thing to say, you know, if it, you're going to write it up as a kennel license, it's not allowed by zoning because of the acreage. Now, if it's just going to be dog training, that's a whole different.
The kennel doesn't have an acreage restriction, the accessory pet care facility does.
Well.
But a kennel is based on the number of animals, four or more, you need to have a commercial license, if the animals are going to be there for more than 12 hours.
Okay, so, now that type of facility, basically, you're saying a kennel needs two acres?
No.
No?
The accessory pet care facility needs two acres. Commercial kennel is based on the number of animals and the time spent. In either case, they have, the Board of Selectmen is in full control of this.
Yeah.
But I would be much more careful, as my, my comment would be, to be much more careful about issuing a commercial kennel license to people who are going to train dogs at four Hotel Place, simply because of the proximity of residents. Because by, then they would have permission to keep animals there for longer, even though they say that's not their intended use, they might decide to change their minds, and they'd have a right to with that license, that's all. But that's up to the Board of Selectmen to figure out. They've sent it to us for comment, that would be my comment. If they want to allow them to operate a training facility, a pet daycare facility, with less than two acres of land, that's also well within their purview.
Anybody else have any comments? Chuck?
I'd agree with Mike that quarter of an acre is a whole lot of space to train, train dogs.
Joe?
No.
Can you probably just make a note based on what Mike and Rip's?
Yeah, I'll, I'll write something up and I'll send it, when I send it to Steve, I'll just copy everyone on.
Sounds good.
You can't do that. Open meeting law, just send it to Steve, and he'll send it out in a minute.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good intention.
We've got another one.
The dog day.
Today is June 5th.
All day.
Yep, and I can't think how many years ago it was, but my history teacher here, I'm looking this up, what's happening tonight, June 5th, back around 1942, 43?
Come on, you didn't even went over there.
How many hints do I need to give you?
Well, it happened on June 6th.
Yeah, but June 5th, around just before midnight, didn't they send a pair of troopers in?
Yeah.
And the bombing started?
Yeah, the gliders went. I thought maybe you were going with the Bobby Kennedy assassination.
No, no, I don't keep up on that history. D-Day. Okay, this one here. Also, Board of Permit, yeah, Board of Selectmen, Special Permit Application for a Commercial Kennel. Elects Vess Group, Pepperell Place, applicant proposes to rescue dogs, train them to work as service dogs, planning board recommendation. Do you people know where Pepperell Place is? Everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, this is what they want to do there. And I don't have any other comments with this application. I do have plans here. Showing the area, is anybody here representing them? If you want to see the plans and.
I was hoping that was you. Someone please answer this question. You want to make something up while you're.
They're just showing in the plans of new windows and what they're going to do to the building for their operation, Delta Dog, Special Permit Application, da-da-da. This is all a block plan area and the layout of the building. Gentlemen, want to see these things?
We have, we have a copy of the.
Do you all have that? Okay, I'm trying. So, basically, any comments? I, I mean, this is in, again, either commercial or industrial area.
This is commercial zone.
It's, the area is about 10 acres there. Well, I guess it's. I don't have a problem.
No, and considering where it is, I mean, yeah, much better location in regards to the.
Pretty big area.
Noise and.
I haven't been up there to see, but I heard, yeah, that.
I haven't been up there.
Quite a job with that building.
They have.
Yeah.
It's improved a great deal.
Yeah, I heard somebody telling me about it today, the company's doing it, they've done other buildings and.
Yeah, done a couple over in Shirley.
Shirley, right, that's what I was told. So, what do we want to say, no comments? No, looks good to us?
There's plenty of space there to do a commercial kennel, if that's what they so choose, or to just do.
Yeah.
I think that, for them, that would be the logical way to go.
Well, they're, I think, doing a different type of dog thing.
Training facilities.
Okay, so, I guess we'll just answer that, looks good, no, no problem on the Board of Planning Board. Moving on, we have here, somebody here, an application person of interest, or that's showing interest to be associate member. Mr. Thamelus has made out the paperwork here and so forth, and he wants to be our alternate member, associate, whatever. I know, Steve, if you guys remember our last meeting, we had talked about, after we did our elections, I was going to call Al Patton on to see if he had interest. When I heard about this today, I said, I better call Al and see if he wants to be an associate, and he did say, yeah, he has interests that he would, wouldn't mind to stay on. He hasn't gone into this kind of form, because I just wanted to touch base with him and see, I would say, he said he would go down and fill out the paperwork and so forth like that. In this case, if we have two forms, I think we take and vote. Steve, I know you've been selectman, I know you've been here before on this board, but, and we've had Al, and a lot of us, you know, probably worked with him, so it'd be really, I think, the board wants to vote on, on that, and maybe hold off to see that Al is serious and fill out the appropriate form, and we'd review it at our next meeting, if you want to do that, I'm just.
Steve, your application is, is the response to us unable to find a alternate, or, or that primarily the interest?
To help out.
To help out.
Seven years' experience on the planning board.
Right.
I sat alongside with Rick McHugh for many years, and I have knowledge and experience to like to help the town with on planning board position, so that's why I filled the paperwork.
You need pardon, I'm kind of.
Yeah, also, he's represented for New York for the last 13 years.
Right, yeah. Yeah, this, he's filled this all out in his application.
Is this appointed by the selectmen, how's this work?
Well, it's between, it's a joint, the Church of Planning Board, Select.
We, the way the process goes through, we make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, and then they approve the appoint, the recommendation or deny it. Never known anyone to be denied, only because we've never had, in my 13 years on the board, ever had two people, you know, interested. But I think in a fair shake, give Al, if he, if Al wants to go down and put the paperwork in, I think both Al and Steve would be great contributors.
Well, yeah, no doubt about that.
Both have experience about, you know.
I mean, I did say that I would check with him, and we, yeah, with the last meeting, and so I did call him today when I heard from Steve Parker that Steve was, had the application to be on our agenda tonight, so.
Is there anything prevents you from serving on two boards in the town?
He's not on any of the board right now. He was past selecting. It's recent, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. We'll do that to see if Al wants to.
If Al follows through, then we can have a vote on the board, and if Al doesn't follow through.
Our next meeting now.
Or you don't pull out.
Our next meeting will be July 10th, at this point, now, Steve, all right? And just see if he wants to, and.
Don't have anything on the 19th?
We have a special town meeting that's.
Town meeting.
Oh, that's the town.
Yeah, this. Which I have to, did I do that? I'm sorry, I skipped over, so. Number six, we have to vote on, is there any more, I mean, Steve, we're all set on, okay, our associate application, but on July 10th, part of this here, a special permit application for a common drive, has been submitted, it requires a public hearing, and right now, and this is under bylaw 6200, we want to, Steve Parker has given me notes to set this hearing for July 10th, which will be our next meeting. So, I just need a vote that we will have that hearing at that time.
I'll, I'll be here.
Want to make a motion for a special permit application for a common drive, with Daniel and Val Quera, I'm sorry, I'm trying to pronounce that name, O'Brien, 13 Heel Street.
Yeah, we don't need to have a vote on it.
We don't have to.
We don't have to vote the, no, we could just set the date.
Okay, all right.
We'll vote on the special permit.
Right, okay. Is that you?
Yeah, Steve had asked me, my name's Brian Marchetti, I'm the civil engineer.
Oh, okay, so.
O'Brien.
You're representing, yeah?
Yeah, so.
I'm sorry, I missed your.
It wasn't a busy night, I didn't mind, that's fine.
I thought you were the dog guy.
So, Steve had asked me just to show up, just in case there were any questions or comments, or, you know, and all the hearing obviously isn't open, but I brought a plan.
You mind throwing it out there for us to take a look at, just so if there's something that we see that. Catches our eye or.
It's just, it's under six acres, it's five, 5.3 acres total. This outside dark line is the full parcel. The existing house is right here, so number 13 Heel Street is here. He has a shed here, ball gravel parking over here to another shed, there's a two-car D-Test garage. So, you can see this, this green darker shaded area is all wetland, so, in order to subdivide this parcel, the only access would be through the main frontage here that was created in an A.I.R. lot, which I have as well. So instead of trying to access it through here, running utilities, we're going to maintain his driveway access right now to this back parcel. We're going to improve the driveway to meet the requirements of the town bylaws for a common drive. We provide the, this light gray shaded is temporary parking, won't be striped, but it's adequate parking for emergency apparatus.
Turn around.
Has the adequate turning radii for emergency vehicles, and the utilities will be run through the existing common driveway, through an access and utilities to access the back parcel. So it meets, it meets all the requirements for area in the zoning bylaws.
Is this right on the S-turn on Heel?
Yes, yes, yeah. And it's a, although this shows us all wetlands, if you've ever been over there or seen the parcel, I'd say a good half of this is all maintained lawn, but because of the wet areas that surround it, and there is a perennial stream up in the back here, the soils are hydroic, so the actual wetland line has to, it was mapped out in the field, but it's still maintained lawn, so. So as you see, it relocated the house to stay outside of the 50-foot no-touch zone, it is within the 100-foot buffer zone, and partially in the riparian zone to the perennial stream. But it does meet all the standards of the bylaw, as of the protection act as well, so we're maintaining less than 10% of impact of a riparian zone.
And this is on town sewer?
This is on town sewer, there's an existing sewer manhole on the property here, which has an easement to it up to where they discharge, actually off the property, so we're continuing the easement back here to the property line, so, because of the grades here, the sewer's relatively shallow, we are going to put a small E1 pump system in the back, just to eject it out by gravity to about here, and then it will flow by sewer through easement by gravity, that's the town system, it's on the water as well, the public water system, so no laws are required, no cedricks required, and we are bringing in electric. I believe gas is available, but the owner hasn't requested gas at this time, so, so Dan O'Brien does live here in this lot, and his intention is to develop and sell. Pretty straightforward, it does require an A.I.R. plan to subdivide the lot, it requires what are our conditions with Conservation Commission, we submitted to Conservation, I, it was my own misunderstanding, but I thought tonight's hearing was going to be a full hearing, and tomorrow night we're meeting with Conservation, so we'd have meetings back to back, but I'm still going to meet with Conservation tomorrow night, they suggested to me that they would not close the hearing until we obviously have a hearing with the planning board, so that will also be continued to July. And for your information, we did meet preliminarily with DPW and Engineering to discuss the situation, what we were doing, what we were proposing with utilities, they had a few comments upfront with how we're going to run utilities and such, and it's been incorporated into the plan, so we're pretty confident it's a solid plan.
All right, so, that date works for you?
Yes.
I think we have another hearing that night also.
Yeah, we do, I think we do, yeah.
And that's at 7:15, and Steve has made a note posting this one at 7:30. They seem awful close together. Give it.
Well, if the first one goes so smoothly, we wouldn't want this gentleman to sit around too long. too long, and if it's to open at 7:30, you're going to be right on at 7:30.
I'm used to it, trust me.
Yeah, that, that's typical, right, because if we don't, then whenever, you know, if it's 7:40 or 7:45, then we can open him right up.
Yeah.
Instead of putting him on at 8 o'clock.
Well, no, I didn't. I was going to give a half hour.
Yeah, give us the number.
It's all limited.
It's all right, 15 minutes you guys feel new, aware of that, so, all right. Do you have these upstairs, have you locked any of these with Steve Parker?
Yeah, we submitted them, he and me, so he's got everything he needs. He has all the plans.
Just because it's, because of the special town meeting now, you've got to wait even longer for us to, so, plenty of daylight to maybe come in and take a look at it.
All right?
Good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks. We'll see you then.
See you.
I don't think I've missed anything else, I think that is the end of our agenda. Yes, I would say it is the end of our agenda.
Now it's the.
So, now it just, is there any other business? Board has members, any discussion, any other matters I have done?
I do, I did look out on the, I was out on the website today, the town website, and I went to Planning Board area, and there's that information on the planning board of who the members are and everything, need really be updated, but Al was still on there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, if you want, I could just contact the webmaster and have him, he's the one to change it or something.
That he could.
I'll stop by and see Steve, a copy of an email.
Check the website. Probably even hold off until, it looks like we could have an associate member, maybe elected per se, or on our behalf at our next meeting, so. All right. Anything else? Well, we can close the meeting and go home.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, gentlemen.